Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the September 14th, 2023 meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I am pleased and happy to see so many people joining us today for this meeting. We are, of course, a board generally of five members and one alternate, given that we have one vacancy. We do have one member joining us virtually today. That is Mr. Chartrend, who is with us now. And Mr. Reynolds, our alternate, will be serving as a full board member for this hearing. We're going to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Gallagher, could you lead us in that, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, I am calling the meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none, if everyone could please place all your devices in silent mode so we can enjoy each other's company while we are here. We are going to begin by calling the first and only matter on our agenda. That is ZBA 2023-08, Joanne Hamburg, 1341 Ringe Road. This is a special permit that was granted under Section 181.94 of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance that has been appealed by the applicant. This is here on remand from the Worcester Superior Court, zoning appeals, civil action number 2385C, fee 00600-A. By consent of all parties to that action and by order of the court to the Board of Appeals for consideration of any modifications to the special permit decision dated May 22, 2023, in light of the applicant's proposed modified plan and construction schedule attached to the said remand. We have the applicant and counsel here tonight. Just to let everybody know what's going to happen, I am going to give the applicant a thorough opportunity to make a presentation to the board and to the audience. I am then going to allow public comment. I'm going to take a poll to see how many people would like to speak at that point in time. And if we have a lot of people wanting to speak, which I perfectly welcome, we are going to impose a few time limits to make sure we all get our say, get this job done today, and go home before midnight. So, after public comment, we would return again to the applicant for any response. And then we would see if the board is ready to close the public hearing. With that, the public hearing is now open. Welcome. Please identify yourself and your city of residence for the minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Louis Levine. I represent the applicant, Joanne Hamburg. I'll try and re-brief tonight. I know this matter has been going on for a while, and we'd like to bring it to a conclusion. My partner's been here at the other meetings. He's a nicer guy than me, but I'm here tonight. I'm going to be trying to be as nice as I can. We've heard loud and clear from the neighbors, residents, city, they want the project to be completed. And so, last couple of months or longer, we engaged Dilson Roy, new engineering firm, take a look at the project and to see what could be done. A, to eliminate the blasting, which has been a concern. And I would say, without throwing my client under the bus, I think it's a legitimate concern. And to get the project on as quickly as possible. Dilson Roy developed a new plan. And we submitted copies of the plans. The executive summary of that plan was to increase the elevation so as less work and material had to be done to accomplish the same thing. And where we are today is the revised plan. If we can get going somewhat immediately, we can complete, and I've given the board a draft decision. Now, I don't mean to be presumptuous to say that you're going to agree with my decision. I just wanted to give a draft decision to outline it. And I did do my very, very, very best to take your decision and your typical comments, requirements, and use them. So, we did give a draft decision. And effectively, the key points of the draft decision is there will be no more blasting going forward. There's some hammering to be done. One of the things that I asked, and Joanne asked Dilson Roy to do, which we spent time doing, was to do explorations to determine how much hammering had to be done. And it turned out that it was less than everybody was guessing at over the years. I don't know why the prior engineers didn't do it. You know, I think we were talking in generalities, which is never good to do. So, they did a lot of borings to see, you know, go down. Are we hitting ledge? Are we hitting refusal? No, we're not, et cetera. So, we're really comfortable and willing to commit that we can commit, can complete, if we get going, by the end of this year, all the hammering. There's no more blasting going to occur, but we only have to do some hammering. And in that period of time, between now and the end of the year, if we can get going fairly quickly, we would be able to finish the incomplete work, which is primarily landscaping, and that's which undone for the occupied units. That would be done by the end of the year. And then we gave a schedule for the balance of the project, which is just our proposed schedule, which that the project would be completed by 2025. Now, the board can have comments on that. That was just our suggestion. We also said that the recreation building, which we're going to build, and I don't know, there's been discussion about us, we are going to build a recreational building, is going to be completed by September of next year. Okay? So, that was the outline. We submitted a plan to the board that showed drainage, grading, and the things that I executive summarized. But in that plan, we showed 11 additional lots. Recently, I have been having conversations with the abutter in the rear, Christiansen's attorney, Mr. Radigan, who's here tonight. And I was requested if we could reduce the number of proposed remaining units. And we developed a plan.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We developed a plan to move all the units away from the rear of the property, the Christiansen property. And we eliminated four of our 11 units. So, right now, this plan, the dynamics of the plan are the same, meaning the drainage, the grading, although there wouldn't be grading on the homes that don't exist, that we eliminated. But all the details on these full set of plans don't change. The drainage doesn't change, et cetera. And we just eliminated all the units in the rear. And as you can see, it pretty much, the units stop at the throat of the cul-de-sac. You know, there's nothing in the back. I'm not trying to put words in Mr. Radigan or the Christiansen's mouth. One of the things that Mr. Radigan, on behalf of the Christiansen's, asked for is to put some kind of conservation easement in the rear of the property so as to prohibit any development in the future, meaning we couldn't come back, or somebody years from today come back and say, well, we'd like to do that. So, we're willing to do that. We're willing to put a permanent restriction, which would, beyond what you could put in as a condition of the permit, but as, you know, a permanent condition, a conservation restriction, so as to say that the, basically, the area behind the cul-de-sac, the open area, can't be developed except to finish out this plan with the seven units. So, that's our proposal. The material on site would all be removed as part of the next period of time between now and the end of the year. We just, we need to get rid of it. We're not, you know, mining any more material. We just need to get rid of it. And I don't know if any of you have gone up there. I committed, one of my sins is actually, I did look at the property. I never do that. It's much nicer to talk about property you haven't seen. Only time I go up is if the judge is going to go. But I went up and I took a look at it. And, you know, we have to get rid of the material just to work. It's as simple as that. So, all the material that's up there that's excess, it's already piled, would be removed between now and the end of the construction season. Like I said, we'd finished all the work that's undone for the front units. And at that point, next year, move forward on completing the seven remaining units and building the rec building, you know, no later than September 30th. We did a detailed plan, Dilson Roy. Greg Roy, principal of Dilson Roy, is here. If you have any questions, I don't, do you have anything to add to any of that?
No, and I thought this was going to be like, yeah, for you to question.
We provided, you know, drainage has been an issue in the back. There was excavation done, and it, you know, created, A, an unsightly situation, and B, a drainage situation. The plans that haven't changed, the only thing, you know, provides affirmative drainage to take care of any effects on the Christiansen property. And to drain it away from the Christiansen property, there's an outlet, a pipe, and it goes into the manhole, to the national river, to the Atlantic Ocean, to England. Okay? So, that's where we are. I really don't have anything else to add tonight. I really would like this whole proposal, and I understand you people are volunteers. I got that. I've been getting that for a long time in my career. But we need to try and get this done as soon as possible. And having said what I said a moment ago, the fact that I've had conversations with the Christianses and their attorney, I'm not in any way saying that that's emasculated anything you want to do. You know, I'm not saying, well, we cut a deal, therefore just sign on the dotted line. I understand that. The board needs to do what they're satisfied with. You know, I think this is a fair way of getting it over with. And, you know, I try to work positively, get rid of the four units that concern, you know, Christiansens, indicated to them that we would put the restriction on. Basically, whatever they ask that I could do, I could do. The only thing I'm asking tonight is to try and get this thing completed so that we can begin as soon as possible. Now, the law is that if you grant the special permit, then upon granting it, we can go forward during the appeal period. It's at our risk, but we can go forward. And we need all that time to get it done, because as you, if we have two months, maybe till November 15th, Thanksgiving, and then after that, it becomes iffy if you can do construction. Given what happened on Monday in terms of rain and climate change, you know, I might have been a little bit, you know, a little easier about that a couple of years ago, but for all I know, you know, it'll be eight feet of snow on November 10th, and, you know, that type of thing. So, that's where it is. Do you have anything to add, Greg? Okay. So, that's it. About 25 years ago, when he was in high school, I rest his game.
Can I ask you to clarify a couple of points, really for the audience, and just because I don't think I heard you say them. By the end of the year means 12/31/2023. The proposal is not only that the hammering would be done and the installation of utilities.
It would stop.
Will the paving be done?
The road paving would be completed.
Will the...
Road paving.
Well, the paving for the current resident.
For the current residents.
At the second half, we can't finish until we get out of the laterals.
Road and driveways.
Roading, driveways, and landscaping.
For the existing residents.
Their houses, vis a vis driveways, roadways, and landscaping would be done.
Okay.
I have a tentative date of October 10th with City Line.
Okay. And the pads for the remaining units, will they also be done by that time?
Probably not. Probably not until the spring.
Till the spring.
We don't have a lot of time.
All right. And will any hammering, crushing, and obviously not blasting, because you've said there's no blasting, but will there be any hammering required for the installation of the cement pads on the remaining units?
No.
No.
Okay.
Anything, Ms. Tree, that involves hammering would be accomplished between now and the end of the year. And that's typically utilities, some drainage pipes and things like that. But we, you know, we've contemplated what we need to hammer, you know, with Dilson Roy.
And you're not going to need to do any crushing to remove the material from the site?
Pardon me, I didn't hear.
You're not going to need to do any crushing of rock to remove the material from the site?
No, we just need to get the excess material out of there.
Okay.
What remains would be used in connection with the remaining construction, if any.
Okay. And this board had last approved the addition of four units, four more units. And now, with this plan, the total is seven more, so three more than the board last approved.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. But, yes, but I think it's, again, I can't speak for the board. You know, I think that, you know, those seven units, especially when we look at the plan that I gave you, are not intrusive to the abutter in the rear. One of the advantages for more units is there's a common fee that the folks pay. And the more units, the smaller the common fee. I'm not going to, you know, sit here all day and say, three units is going to make somebody rich, you know? But I think, you know, this has been a long project. The economics have been difficult. You know, ledge is not something you make money on. Okay? We just want to get it done, and we want to have enough money to get it done. And, you know, we have to, you know, and we're obligated to build a rec building, and there's no doubt about it. So, that's just so many hundred thousand dollars that we have to spend on that.
Okay. Is, on the other table, is that the modified plan?
Is that what, ma'am?
Is that the plan that you've modified?
The one I handed you. Everything is to change. You have a...
That's this one. I just want to make sure that if some member of the audience would like to look at a close-up of the plan, that they have the opportunity to take a look at what's on the table.
Anybody wants to see the plan, they can. The plan, the only thing that changed between the full set of plans and this one sheet is a reduction in the number of units. The roadway, the drainage, utilities are all the same. And they're all depicted in detail in the full set of plans, which I have other copies of, if somebody wants to look at those. Okay? But nothing, this was a result of my conversations with Ms. Radigan, who represents the Christiansens, you know, and he made a reasonable request.
Yeah, and you tried to produce a plan timely to us. Is there a PDF available that could be forwarded to me so that I can put it up on the screen? I would like to put it up so that Mr. Chartrend can see and so that members of the audience virtually can...
Vincent?
I have the one that you forwarded to me.
No, you, no, this is different. You don't have this one. Okay. This is, I think it came in late. We, as a result of speaking...
I'll make a PDF right now.
You know, we've reduced the number a lot.
I'm going to take a moment to see if we can do this before we go on.
She's texting him a picture of it.
I need an email, so I think the city solicitor is emailing it to me.
Yeah.
I believe so. And these are the three additional.
Can I just ask a clarifying question, just so I understand?
The only changes to this plan from the original plan that was before the board that we decided and special permit issued on was also the elevation came up about six feet or so into the rear so that there's a substantially, substantial reduction in rock excavation that has to happen.
Executive summary correct, but I can have Greg maybe be more detailed about it. It's Greg Roy, he's the project engineer.
Do you receive it?
Did you send it to my old email? Did you send it to my office and the current one and not the old one?
Not the old one.
But that would be funny.
Yeah, it's just crazy right now.
Oh, there you are. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. I would like to concentrate on you, so I would like to open this before we move forward. All right. Counsel, do you mind if I share-screen this so that you're not the one on screen visually while we're talking?
Say that again.
I would like to put this up on the Zoom window, so you would be talking, but there'd be a map up there if you mind.
Oh, that's fine with me, yeah. We're at your service. Whatever works for...
Moment.
Want to go to the...
Want this?
The one with the shorter lots.
Oh, I got that.
Do you get another one?
I can get back one copy of the plan.
We'll see on the screen. Thanks. I just want to take a... Thank you.
I'm sorry that... Having a little difficulty doing this.
A little bit. The last time we did the first plan.
What I'm trying not to do is share my entire...
Yeah, correct. Just on...
So, this is just replacing this...
Yeah, this is, I'm going to correct the record here for one small point.
I mean...
Okay.
I just want...
Good.
Before Greg gets started, he did point out to me that the plan that I just handed up to you, the, and he'll explain more, the cul-de-sac was shortened a bit, meaning it was pulled further away from the back. You know, I said everything was identical, but the cul-de-sac, the length of it was reduced. Okay? Just a bit, and he'll explain it. It's generally the same layout.
All right.
So, with your permission...
Yeah, please.
Yeah, it's so a miracle, you know, 20 years ago, that was an impossibility to be able to do that. My name's Greg Roy with Dilson Roy. Appreciate your time this evening. So, just to answer the city solicitor's question, the, this plan that you just received tonight and that is on the screen has a reduction of units. And what counsel just said is correct. We actually took the opportunity to reduce the length of the road because we did not need to build such a long, a lengthy, a lengthy road extension with the fewer units. So, it allowed us an opportunity to condense the project back further into the site, allowing some more open space along the back of the property, which we thought would be an advantage. All of the infrastructure that is within the road sewer extension that's required, the drainage extension that's required, the drainage that we're extending to the back of the site to pick up the flow from the offsite properties, all of that remains the same. So, we're really just reducing the length of the cul-de-sac, but all of the other drainage and sewer water and extensions and things remain the same. So, did that answer your question?
That replace, this drawing replaces the drawing depicted on page C2.
Correct. It would replace C2.
Do you have the master plan from C2 of Dilson's own back there?
Greg's there. I had submitted, again, I said, a draft decision just for the board's consideration. But in that draft decision, which again, we modeled against your prototypical decision, we said the following, which I just want to repeat it. The following work shall be completed by the end of this year's construction season. Remove existing stockpiled earth materials, hammering, last section. Process and remove extra material. Rough grade and install utilities and drainage and road. Pave existing driveways, grade home sites. Prior to July 1, 2024, all remaining individual home pads and final connections for laterals and electric utilities shall be installed and road paved. That's the unconstructed portion. We said, prior to September 31, I guess somebody doesn't realize September only has 30 days, the recreational building shall be complete. Prior to December 31, 2005, and the recreation building is September of '24. Prior to December 31, 2025, all units have been installed. No earth removal, as defined in the zoning ordinance, may be conducted on site. Applicant may construct no more than, and now it would change, we said 11, but now we would say seven additional resident units according to the plan, which we submitted the modified layout. Hours of construction are limited to Mondays through Fridays, 7:00 a.m., 5:00 p.m. No construction work Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. The applicant shall comply with dust mitigation methods during construction and regrading. Not to be operated as a public nuisance. Site to be kept clean of construction debris and dumpsters to be emptied regularly. On-site toilets to be provided for all construction workers. No construction vehicles over the weight limit of the Ringe Road Bridge or any other bridge in the area. And then, we incorporated your language, which says, if a violation, a fine may be imposed in the amount of $300 today. So, I just want to repeat what I had given again. That was just our best guess as to what we thought was reasonable and wouldn't bring us back here. So, bottom line is we're done by the end of the year with all hammering. And by July 1, all the pads will be done and the road done, maybe not final pave, but done, you know, prior to the end of September. Prior to the end of September of '24, the recreation building shall be complete. And prior to the end of December of 2025, the units shall have been installed. And otherwise, the remaining conditions are pretty much from your decisions. And only be seven more yet.
Am I correct that the condition that the applicant is to have an as-built plan reviewed and approved under site plan approval with the planning board was removed as well?
We didn't think that was necessary.
Is there, do you have a representation for against that provision? Other than obviously, you know?
Again, you know, it just, for lack of a better excuse, it just wasn't our understanding that was necessary. I mean, given, you know, this CBA special permit, et cetera, you know, I, it would be, it just wouldn't, again, most respectfully, I just don't understand what would be the purpose because it would be an automatic approval by the planning board if you said this was okay. There's nothing, there's no other moving parts. Okay? I mean, we do have to get conservation commission approval. I mean, not approval, we have an order of conditions, but, you know, we may need to
Modify it.
Modify it, so, you know, we need to take care of that too. You know, they're waiting on what happens here, so we're waiting on what happens.
So they're going to, you have an proceeding before them to review an existing order of conditions, given the modifications here?
The extent that we need to do work that would be coming under the conservation commission's jurisdiction, we couldn't do that work until we got the approval. But there's a whole bunch of work that we can do, the majority of this work that doesn't need conservation commission approval.
Okay, so that, in other words, at least the end of the year approval should not be delayed, no matter what the CONSCOM has decided.
I mean, maybe we'll have a flood again the way we had on Monday, but we'll take that chance.
I think I would like to move on to public comment now. I'm sure that the board will have some questions for you after that. And I thank you both for the presentation and the work that you've done to bring it here and to try to reach a mutually satisfactory conclusion for all parties involved, so. I would like by a show of hands, I know that we have one of the abetters represented by counsel here. I would certainly like to allow you to speak. And who else besides that would like an opportunity to speak? So we have two, three, four. And if we can, if I can get back to it, is there anybody virtually who would like to speak? I think there is, yes, at least one, and I think probably two. Okay. I think Attorney Radigan, could you come forward first? I'd like to allow you a fair opportunity, since you participated in a negotiation, to speak on that. I trust you'll be respectful of time without setting a specific limit.
I certainly will, Madam Chairwoman. If it may please Madam Chairwoman, other members of the board, I appreciate the time to be heard this afternoon. As has been mentioned, I represent Mrs. Christian, Ms. Mara Christian and her husband, Mr. Christian, with respect to their property at 71 Bennett Road. Now, as applicant's counsel has already mentioned, it isn't my purview or my intention to step in the bounds of what your decision-making is. We certainly would respect whatever this board did, but we wanted to have an opportunity to at least share our input as it impacts my client specifically and ask for this board's consideration with whatever decision that they arrive at. I appreciate the assistance of the city solicitor as well as applicant's counsel. It was a spirited effort in a very short period of time that we got to this, but in effect where we are, Madam Chairperson, is essentially my clients have worked with the applicant and it's not something we love, but it's something we can live with. This board had already approved four, we recognize, had the applicant withdrawn this right to remand, that permit had already issued and there wasn't much we could do about it. This is a compromise, a compromise my client and her husband had a very difficult time accepting. And they've done it with great reservation, but it's something that they've endorsed. And the reason they've endorsed it is because they are concerned that this project is something that's gone on entirely too long. And they have gotten the concessions that they are most concerned with, which is we are going to ask this board respectfully, and again, it's within your province to make the decision as to what you want, as my brother has mentioned, they can operate at risk if you issued this permit tonight. My clients do want a week, and we think we can accomplish that with the help of your city solicitor as well as applicant's counsel to work through the language of an affirmative easement and/or a grant to either the city or nonprofit for the purposes of putting a non-disturbance conservation restriction on the remainder of the property that is shown in the map that's depicted here around particularly the rotary. It's meant essentially to serve both as a vegetation buffer so that we can have screening returned. It's to prevent, most importantly, future development. And it's important to us that this be done in the form of an easement because even though this board in their province can issue a condition that that be a non-disturbed section, that wouldn't preclude the applicant five years, 10 years, or any other landowner from coming back in front of a similar board made up perhaps of different members and asking for a modification to that condition. Because what we're really looking to do, as Madam Chairperson has been acutely aware, is stop this project, bring it to a completion. The other things that are really important to us is the no blasting. In addition to the no blasting, to the extent that the other disruptive activities can be limited to this calendar year and limited to reasonable construction hours, that would be very much welcome. I am not in a position, and part of my agreement with my brother is not to weigh in on anything beyond the blasting and that, you know, he suggested some dates. He's proposed a, essentially an order for you to consider. That is not what my job was, nor are we necessarily blessing those dates or anything. But we do want the blasting to stop. We do want the rock processing to come to an end by the end of the calendar year. We want it to be done in reasonable business hours. We don't want it to be done on weekends. And the only question I have through the chair, if I may, is to Mr. Roy. One of the conditions that we were working through is a permanent drainage solution engineered and implemented to resolve the water problem that's occurring near the Christians or on the Christians' property right now. My understanding, and if you could just make sure I have that clarification, is that there is a plan for a catch basin to be tied in and that that will address that water issue, which was also another issue that we wished to have addressed. And my understanding and the representation is by counsel is that that's part of the plan.
Mr. Roy, go ahead.
Thanks again, Greg Roy, Dilson Roy. Yes, that we have a pipe that extends through the cul-de-sac up to the external property line, which is designed to accept the flow that comes onto the property. We, I did want to just make one more statement in response to counselor's comments. The approved plans included a catch basin in that area on the end of that pipe. We saw an opportunity again to improve the hydraulic situation of that, so we actually just have a direct, we're doing a direct open pipe. It's a direct inlet, so we don't have to have the stormwater come in, have a clogging problem with the catch basin, drop down, and then go into a pipe. We're just going to, we saw an opportunity to just have a straight, more like a culvert-style pipe inlet on there. But we do have that pipe, and that is part of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And then just to conclude, you know, if we could be given the week to work through, if this board were to consider the applicant's request, I think it's something we could accomplish within a week. I know the city solicitor has been a great help for us, and I appreciate his efforts to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to remind both counsel that if this board wants to reach a vote, it needs to do so tonight, and facts subsequent to the vote can't modify the vote. We would have to have another meeting to modify the vote. And our next meeting is in the beginning of October. We could certainly entertain, and I'm going to say right now, I haven't heard from any of the members of the community, and I do want to hear from them. But we could entertain a condition that allowed the board to revoke, if there was not an easement agreement executed within a certain period of time. And that might be a way to address that issue between getting some certainty on this and allowing that time to look at language, so. Any response to that? Any response, Attorney Levine?
I think, again, I look it up to the board. I don't want to be the smart guy, but the two choices are if the board can meet in a short period of time, again, we have the window. If we push the meeting off, as the chairman indicated for another month, then it's going to be a fait accompli, then we're not going to probably have a good chance of getting the work done by the end of the year. Or you can put a condition in that said that, basically taking my brother's words, an enforceable conservation restriction would be imposed reasonably satisfactory to town council, restricting the land, you know, that my brother described in the rear, outside the cul-de-sac. I think that's kind of, and I'm not going to speak for the city solicitor, it's not an abnormal condition that is put in decisions. You've identified what you expect, you know, conservation restriction, the land you want to be restricted, and it's got to be reasonably satisfactory to town council. And I'm sure, you know, we have a template conservation restriction. I'm sure Mr. Radigan does too. They probably look alike. And we're not going to create anything that's, you know, not going to do anything but restrict it except for open space and conservation purposes. So I don't have a problem with that, barring a meeting next week.
Attorney Pushteri, do you have any comment on that?
You know, I just wanted to understand a little bit more about the rock processing. I just, I thought that the hammering was going to produce a byproduct that didn't require processing. My understanding, and I think in my earlier question, was we're elevating the project from zero to six feet, so we're reducing the amount of rock removal that has to happen, and that the only rock work that was happening was the hammering for the lines that need to accommodate the buildings and the drainage that we're talking about. So, and then I guess, so what are we hammering? What's the byproduct of the hammering? And is that going to be processed?
Gotcha. So the hammering that's left, and you are correct, we raised the road as much as we possibly could in an effort to, in the spirit of this conversation, to respond to concerns about hammering and to try and minimize that. So the utility trenches, like you said, are the areas on site where we have to do the remaining hammering. We did advance some test holes along, we staked the proposed utility lines, we advanced some test holes, so we have a, to get a good handle on where the ledge is. So the timetables and the things that we presented to your board were based on some field evidence, not just, not just some guesses. So it's the utility trenches, both the mainline trenches and the road, and the utility trenches for the laterals and the services from the road to each of the units that have to be, where there's some hammering that's required. The rock that is removed from that would not be crushed on site, it would be loaded and hauled offsite.
So the processing of rock in the proposed decision that was drafted by counsel is just really removing it out of the hammered byproduct? And then loading that and then shipping that away?
Yes, the material on site, most of the material we need to remove is with the tailings.
Right.
Just repeating, we have a big pile of stuff, we're going to remove it, except what we need in the condition it's in.
Right.
To, go, Greg.
There's some, there's three or four different types of material on site. There's, and all of them are in various forms of process. There's processed rock that's already been through the crusher, that's usable for structural fill. We're actually planning on using that pile on site. Then there's tailings that came out of the screening process when the loam was screened. Big pile of, you know, rocks that really aren't usable. That's just going to be trucked offsite, no processing, just loading onto a truck and removed. There's a pile of unprocessed loam. Again, that's to be removed. You're going to screen that? Okay, so we need to screen that. So we're going to screen the unprocessed loam. And then there's a pile of processed loam that's already been screened that will be used in the restoration effort.
So, the byproduct of the screened loam is in a pile and that's just going to be?
It's called tailings, and those will be trucked offsite. Those are not usable.
Tailings will be trucked. And then?
There's four, to be clear, there's four products. There's more or less a pile of graded base, which is good usable material that we're going to use for construction.
That is previously processed.
Previous, it's processed, correct. No further processing required. Then there's tailings, those will be removed, again, no processing. There's a pile of unscreened raw loam that needs to be screened. So that, I guess, if you can consider that processing, it's not a crushing operation, it's a screening operation, so you're taking out the, any roots or rocks. It would be added to those tailing piles that would be taken off. And then there's also a pile of loam that has already been processed that would be used in the restoration effort.
And then the byproduct of the hammering, in my mind, is an untrained, you know, rock crusher. It's going to produce?
We're not going to crush it, we're just going to load the, whatever chunks come out of the trench, and we're going to load them in trucks and take them offsite.
There's not going to be any more crushing.
Right. Whatever's there is there, as Greg indicated. And in fact, the, all the activities that he mentioned, including screening the loam, will happen by the end of the year. So at the end of the year, there'll be a pile of processed loam to be spread as construction is completed.
The hammering byproduct will not be processed but trucked. The hammering byproduct will be, not be processed but trucked.
Correct.
Around, yeah, there'll be. Again, just Greg can explain it better than I. Anybody can explain anything better than lawyer, but it's, you know, the trenches are not major ledge removal operations with the hammering, maybe you can explain better than I.
Right, I mean, the ledge kind of undulates to the site. Certain areas, there'll be a little bit more hammering than others. Some areas, we don't have to hammer. But any of that rock that we take out of the trench, again, will be loaded by excavator directly into the truck or maybe yarded for a minute, but it's not going to be crushed. We're just going to load it and truck it offsite.
Thank you. Okay.
And then the conservation, we're just going to do a family standard conservation restriction and will, and who will be granted the conservation restriction or?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
We're going to place a conservation restriction, are we going to grant that to a conservation agency?
Exactly what Doug said, it's either going to be granted to the city or some nonprofit if you have one.
City, nonprofit, or if we can't find anyone, the Christians can take an affirmative easement to protect it. But I'm certainly willing to work with your office to make sure that that's done to your satisfaction.
Because we just recently went looking for a nonprofit to take a conservation restriction, and we couldn't find one recently, so, you know, in an isolated area like that.
So the alternative would be, we would do an affirmative easement, that my clients would have rights of enforcement and they have every interest in the world.
You got to run with the land with your client's house.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, at this point in time, I would look for a public comment. I am going to, given the time period we have, I don't think we have that many people looking to comment. I'm going to have a five-minute time limit. If somebody doesn't need to use their five minutes, we always appreciate giving the time back. There is a light on the podium as well as a timer. You start off with a green. When you're getting close, you get a yellow. When you get a red, it's time to stop speaking, okay? it's time to stop speaking, okay? I know that Ms. McClure, you had said that you had wanted to speak, and that you've acted as a representative for some of the residents, and that's aside, we haven't heard from, so please, if you'd like to, you're welcome to the podium. State your name and city of residence for Ms. Mott's minutes, and I'll let you know.
Okay, my name's Lorelei McClure. I live at 146 Nigel Court. On Tuesday, I did walk from one end of the complex to the other, and I did speak to multiple residents. I did try to speak to most of the residents if they were home or whatever. And I did have the opportunity to speak to many of the residents about what was going The consensus is, we really, really just want the project done. I will want to say, we are very happy with what Joanne has done within the last couple of months, about having the guys come up there and take care of the drainage issue, because with the massive rain that we have had, in the last meeting that we had had, I had shown what we were calling Lake Woodland Estates. We no longer have Lake Woodland Estates. Yay, yes. So, it dries out fast, I mean, we still get the waterfall and stuff like that, some, why it's raining. So that has been taken care of with what they were able to do. But needless to say, we do not get the work done. I will make one comment, where they say work from seven to five, please make that eight to five. I think most of us residents, remember, we're a 55 and older community, we do not get up at seven o'clock in the morning. I will just make that comment, and I think most of us would agree with that. We want this done by December of 2024. That was the other consensus we had. And the other thing was, the rec center was very important to the majority of us. Some, we ranged from, we don't care about the rec center, to we do care about the rec center, and then there was the in-between, well, whatever. I just wanted to let you know that that's what I had talked to, the whole group. I just wanted to be prepared for this meeting, to let you know that that's what I got from walking from, like I said, from the very beginning to the very end, and talking to everybody. But kudos for Joanne, for getting her guys in there, to trying to get all the information that you guys wanted, because she's really tried hard to do that, and support us residents. And thank you, City, for also listening to us and recognizing that we are a community over there.
Thank you, Ms. McClure. All right. We have Counselor Fleming on line. I'm going to go to you next, please feel free to go, you have five.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So I did have an opportunity on Sunday to speak to some of the residents, and the consensus was exactly what Lorelei had mentioned. They want to just get this project done. I want to make everybody happy, the people of Woodland Estates and the surrounding neighbors, the abutters. I think asking for two more years of jackhammering, which, we don't know how long that jackhammering will take, it could take six hours a day, that's where most of the noise was coming from. I just want to see all the residents up there happy. I asked this question a couple of meetings ago, and I'm going to ask it again, but I'm going to make this comment before I ask the question. I wouldn't want this going on in my backyard, and I live in rural residential. I want to know how the developer can sit there and think this is a good idea when she herself has moved to an area where this would not be allowed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Fleming. Okay. I'm going to go to another member of the audience, if somebody would like to raise their hand if they wish to speak. Yes, sir. Please approach the podium, state your name and city of residence, and then you will have five minutes.
I am Hal Melanson, 13 Bennett Road.
Thank you.
My soon-to-be 92-year-old mother lives in the house, she's been listening to this for a long, long time. I have, I have mixed emotions, but I really don't want my mother to be listening to this all day long, all day long. So, I am opposed to the extra units. I say stick to your plan that you've already voted on, four units. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, you're welcome to approach the podium, state your name and city of residence, and you will have five minutes. I push the buttons here, just so you know.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Douglas Caves, I'm an abutter 1345 Ringe Road. I agree with Mr. Melanson. I don't see why it should change the original settlement. Because I don't think that this project has ever gone right, the way it was proposed to go, from the very beginning. And so I have a lot of skepticism that, no matter what happens tonight, that conditions will be met, or agreements will be met. I'm just saying I have skepticism, for whatever reasons, acts of God or whatever. So I agree with Mr. Melanson. That being said, I hate to see something languished like this forever and ever. And if this compromise seems like a good idea to the board, then I can live with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. There is a Ms. DeChamps on line who had her hand up previously. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. All right, Ms. DeChamps.
Hi, this is Kathleen DeChamps. I live on 1307 Ringe Road, I'm an abutter. And this is the meeting I attended, this is a public meeting. I really do struggle with the last public meeting. We had an agreement of four, and I don't know how the 11 came about. I know there was some discussions with, you know, Attorney Positeri talked to me, I understand that, but I still do not agree with the proposed, you know, I guess, three additional. So I would look at the plan, I want to understand, with how many truckloads for the material, the four types of material that has to be taken out, how many truckloads is that planned? You know, I also picked up the time of the work, I would prefer, we had agreed, no weekends, no holidays, and it was eight o'clock. So I would like us to go back to that agreement of eight o'clock start, and I know you have to finish off your project, but I still don't agree with the additional. And I guess, I was trying to understand, I heard 2025, this would be complete. So I, I don't understand between 2024 and why there'd be a full year. Did I misunderstand that? So if they could answer that question for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I appreciate, I appreciate the board in having these public meetings.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to mute you, and I'm going to look to Mr. Roy for a moment, to answer the question about how many truckloads. And I will, I will take a plus or minus 10.
Unfortunately, I don't have that answer for you this evening. I don't, I don't know the, I don't have the cubic footage of the piles off the top of my head. I don't know, you don't have a document in your file. So I, like I said, the, when I was talking before about the four different types of material, there's the processed material that's already been processed, that's a pretty good-sized pile, we expect most of that to actually stay on site. The loam is going to stay on site, it's really the tailings. I mean, I'd be guessing, I mean, I took a look at the pile, just like you. Do you have any, how many yards are there?
We also have stamps.
I know, we calculated it, I just don't have it with us. Yeah, there's stamps and things. I mean, there's several hundred yards of material, and you're talking, you know, if you use, you know, it depends on the type of truck you use, maybe it's, you might be able to take 20 yards out at a time. So, for every hundred yards of material, you're talking at least five trucks, and there's hundreds of yards of material that has to come off the site. So, you know, you're talking about, I just don't want to give you a no, I'm just not sure of the final number, but you're talking about, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50, not an insignificant number of truckloads that'll have to come off, that'll have to be employed to take the material off the site.
I believe that your firm had produced an estimate when we were looking at the question of what does and does not constitute earth removal?
Yes.
Of the amount to be drawn off.
I just don't have that document with me.
Joanne, may I?
Yeah. So I apologize, I didn't.
Okay, I'm going to just note this, and the next time we have a pause, if one of you has come up with a number, if you could let us know.
Can we ask the director to comment on? We haven't rehearsed this. Is the amount of hammering that, to complete the project, you know, the difference between four and seven units is, in my mind, kind of the minimalist, because a lot of the hammering has nothing to do with the units, and you can talk about this, has to do with drainage in the street, utilities that have to be done anyway, et cetera.
Right.
So, there isn't, if we do four, and we do seven, it isn't like we're doing almost double the amount of hammering.
Yeah, the mainline sewer and drain lines are the deepest utilities out there that we have to, that'll be installed in the road, water main, and so on. Once we get, I mean, water has to be installed at five feet deep to the units, right? But we have flexibility with the sewer lateral, so for example, when we install that sewer lateral, and we get underneath the water main or over the water main, however we're going to do that, we can then, we can then bring that pipe up and run it shallower into the unit. So most of the rock removal is in the road, the utilities that we have to install on the road. So I think I would agree with that, while there'll be some reduction in hammering that would be required. I don't know that you'd really notice the difference if you were reducing the units down to three, down by three. If you give me a few minutes to review this document, I'll, I'll try to have an answer for you.
Why don't you have a seat, and we'll go on with public comment at the time.
Can we talk to the woman who's on the, virtually? We've agreed, I mean, I don't have an objection to making it eight to five, I was actually, and we had seven to five anyway, but somebody mentioned eight, we don't have a problem with that. Again, we don't have a problem if the board wants us to be complete with the pads, maybe not all the construction, by the end of 2024, okay? If that makes people happier. But I just do want to emphasize that we're not going to be blasting anymore, the ledger, you know, the ledge removal and hammering, as Greg described it, is a majority is in the street, no matter what we do. And we're not going to process that. And we have this big pile of material that we have to get out of there, no matter what happens. So we want to get that out as quickly as possible, all right? And I think Greg will give you some numbers on trucks and things like that in a moment.
Yeah, and I'm also going to note that this proposal you submitted did not propose to work on Saturdays, Sundays, or holidays.
We said it ourselves.
Just on Monday.
We committed that Saturday, Sundays, and holidays.
Monday through Friday. I'm also going to note that there's a deadline of September 31st, 2024, which I'm going to take as September 30th, so we don't have an imaginary day in there. Is there any other member of the public present in person who would like to speak? Okay, madam, please poach the podium, state your name and city of residence, and then you will have up to five minutes.
Okay. Hi there, I'm Marissa Papouti, I'm a resident at 1361 Ringe Road. I'm also an owner of an abutting property. So I appreciate the board, everyone here. I think, you know, I can appreciate the compromise, you know, on this project, and, you know, appreciate both sort of teams working together on that. I think my concern is around the timeline, you know, in terms of, especially from my understanding, these are manufactured homes, so they're built offsite, kind of brought in, and my sort of understanding is, you know, why would it take so much longer to bring in, you know, three extra units? Like, why would this take up until the end of 2025? Or, I might be misunderstanding now, because I know y'all were just talking about 2024. But I think getting this done as quickly as possible sounds like it's in the best interest of the residents of Woodland Estates, as well as all of us abutters. So just hoping that the board will really take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your attending the meeting and speaking. Does anybody have a desire to speak, making a different point than what has been stated already? I'm going to check with Mr. Roy, do you have a number yet?
I was trying to confer with the engineer that did the calculations from my office, who's attending another meeting, so he's not able to comment. There's two numbers in there. The analysis that we did at the bottom was a calculation based on the amount of material that was considered earth removal by the town's ordinance. And that number was previously at somewhere around 5,000 cubic yards that would need to be removed, and the revisions that we did to the plan reduced that by about 4,400 cubic yards, down to something in the neighborhood of 920 cubic yards. But there's a discrepancy, there's another number on that that I wasn't quite sure about that was quite, significantly higher than that amount, but in my view, the tailings pile out there is no more than 1,000 cubic yards. Do you agree with that, Joanne?
Not more than that.
Okay, well, all right. So unfortunately, I just don't have a good answer for the board tonight, I apologize.
1,650. Approximately 1,650 yards.
Oh, tailings?
Yeah, because I asked him, I said, I was wondering if you have the calculations for the tailings.
Why don't you tell the board who you got that?
Yeah.
This is, I go in Hamburg.
This is from Frank, that works with.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Great, so that's the gentleman I was trying to contact, who did these calculations, who's indicating that there's 1,650 cubic yards of tailings on the site.
For the rest of us, can you translate that?
Tailings are the things, those are the, that, truckloads, if you assume 20 cubic yards in a truck. I'll just do it, because my brain is spinning. Yeah, 80. 82.
Thank you.
I mean, it's a plus or minus number, unfortunately, I can't give you an exact number.
Just to know the ballpark is good.
I apologize.
Thank you.
So, again, if we're doing this over eight weeks or 10 weeks, so if we have 80 trucks, and I know I can carry it up with 80 or 70 or 90, but if we have 80 trucks, it's 10 trucks a week, which is two trucks a day. And I'm not going to say to the board that it's going to get done that way, because some days you get no trucks, and some days you get four trucks, I'm not going to, depends, okay? But there would be a sunset for it, and we're not adding to it also, okay? Whatever's there is going to come out. Okay. Whatever's there is going to come out and that's it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. You may ask a brief question. You need to approach the podium, Mr. Melanson. Just remember that I have already let you speak once. But you didn't use your five minutes, so.
13 Bennett Road.
Appreciate that.
The 82 cubic yards of tailings. Does that include, that's not everything. That's just the tailings, correct?
That is my understanding, but I, I, there's also a statement that the,
The number of,
Sir.
I'm sorry.
That the, there's part of the material that is piled is going to be utilized in the construction of the road, I believe. Correct? All right. You can be seated, Mr. Melanson, Mr. Solicitor.
So 1,640 yards of tailings is the current assumption on the table, and I would certainly never hold you to that. And then it's fair to, was then assumed that there'll be some hammering? And that will produce some additional material? And it would be very difficult for us to come up with a number while we sit here tonight. But it would be, then, then we would be over 82 trucks.
Thank you. I think at this point I am, I, I understand, but I think at this point I am going to move to board questions because my board members have been very patiently waiting and I think appreciating all of the questions and the information that's been given. So I'm going to see if there's any board member that wants to ask a question. Mr. Reynolds, I'm going to go to you first.
One of the questions that we didn't quite talk about was just an observation. So I'm going to say this as a comment. But it is that for some of the existing homes, you do have, where it would appear to be some ledge issues?
The existing homes? No. Yeah, we can barely hear you. The existing homes, there's, the homes that are in now, they're all set and ready to be.
Right. So maybe I'm informing you then that there is some ledge that is falling behind some of your homes that I would ask you to look into.
Okay.
Thank you. The other, just sort of, I actually don't have any other questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gallagher, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Just one. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm wondering about the elevation on the street. Seeing as though that the additional sites that are proposed to go in will not require blasting. And I'm wondering how steep that elevation would be.
Did I understand your question? The grade, you referring to the grade of the street?
Yes. Yep.
Care with me?
This changed.
Yeah. We are going up at, it'll be a 6% grade. That's at the worst, which is six point, which is six feet and 100 feet for, for, so for every 100 feet, we're going up six feet. So not excessively steep, but we're trying to get as much out of it as we can. The challenge to raising the road anymore is really, we have to blend in with what was already built. So you can only transition so fast into, into a steep section. So.
Okay. Okay. Do you foresee any drainage issues caused by the grade?
I do not. We have catch basins that were included in the original design that we have updated and modified to make sure that they work with the new design. And again, a 6.1% grade is not excessively steep. So.
Certainly makes me feel better. Thank you.
Yep.
All set.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Shartren, I'm going to go to you next. Do you have any questions for the applicant? And if you do, you'll need to unmute yourself. All right, Mr. Shartren.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think I have any questions for the applicant or, or the engineers or, or the, you know, the council or anything like that. I mean, I think someone already mentioned it, but it, those additional lots aren't going to amount to anything because that cul-de-sac needs to be completed. So, you know, those additional couple of lots, they're kind of incidental to the work. That's, that's really more of an incentive for the, for the owner, you know, to get a couple more in there. But I don't really know what, what her plans were, and she probably did have some stuff lined up. But I know that everyone wants to wrap it up, and I agree, it should be wrapped up. But those, those, all they do is pour a pad four inches thick on top of the ground. So, so those blocks, there's not a lot of work there. The work is in the infrastructure and that has to get done no matter what. So it's kind of a moot point. And that's all I really have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shartren. Mr. McLaughlin, any questions for the applicant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions for clarification. We're going to use the utility pole that's at the top of the hill. Is that kind of going to be in the center of the rotary, as we'll call it?
Yes.
Do you plan on doing any landscaping in the center of the rotary or is that just going to be?
No, it'll, it'll be bloomed and seeded.
Okay. Any plantings sort?
Yeah, we always plant. I can't tell you what we're going to plant, but we always plant some kind of flowers. So it's pretty, yes.
Okay. I'm going to call it the pond in the back. Tell me about that. Is it going to get filled back in? Is that a, going to become a riprap detention pond? You could kind of explain that whole piece of land, which I assume is going to be part of this conservation restriction.
Right. So yes, the, as the the member has said, there's an area, a low area that I think probably most everybody in the room is familiar with. And we'll call it the ponded area. We will need to fill that area to build the cul-de-sac. There would have, now with the new plan, not be any units behind the cul-de-sac. The previous plan would have had additional fill there for those units. So we'll be filling and doing the earthwork that we need to accommodate the cul-de-sac. And then we'll be extending the storm drain. Not have the plant up there anymore, but we'll be extending the storm drain upgrading through the cul-de-sac to the point where the, the fill comes down to the edge, to the existing grade and the low point, so that that, that area will have a place to drain. So.
So I'm, I'm a visual person.
Yeah.
I'm struggling a little bit. You come up to the end of the project, okay? It's very nice and flat at this time, right?
Yep.
And I see a pole.
Yep.
Then I see mountains of dirt.
Yep.
And then there's a hole.
Yes.
Okay. You talk about drainage in a pipe. Where's the pipe start and where's it go?
The, the pipe is going to, is going to start, if you will, at the low point, that ponded area. It's going to provide a relief for that water to enter into the pipe and, and enter into the storm drain system that we're going to build through the road.
So you're going to drain from the low point?
Correct.
Into your storm drain?
Correct.
That's at the top of the hill right now?
Yep.
And it was blocked
that's,
two weeks ago.
That's correct. So when, once that's all built, there'll be positive drainage. There'll be a way for that water that's currently ponding to enter into our storm drain system, which it was designed to do and, and be taken care of.
What was the purpose of digging the pond? Or was it already there?
I'm not sure.
The detention pond?
No.
That's what I'm trying to find out. What is it?
Oh, the pond, sorry. The pond in the back was basically created because we have our piles of loom and material there. That's the only reason that we have that hole. It's not like we dug a hole. We did drill, dig a, like a perimeter swale so that the water would drain into the existing detention basin. But those, that low end.
Is that going to be filled back in?
Well, the other property is higher than ours.
Yep.
So the water runs down onto our property, so it will always be lower than theirs.
Okay. So my question is, is the pond going to be filled back in?
Partially. The, the part that we need to, to build the cul-de-sac. And then we, we intend to keep.
The cul-de-sac is.
Well, it's in where the piles are. I'm not sure.
Well, I'm assuming the cul-de-sac is where
The pole's not in yet.
Going to be around the pole.
The new pole's not in yet.
But I think he was talking about the existing pole.
You're talking about the pole that's there now. There's one more pole coming.
Please. Thank you.
Yeah, I think if you were asking about the existing pole that was there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not in the center of the cul-de-sac. Sorry. I think that was a misunderstood, she misunderstood.
So how much further back is the rest of the project from the pole? Because again, I'm a visual person and it just seems like there's more than adequate room to stay much closer.
I'm going to put the plan back up on the screen for anybody who wonders what's happening.
So from that pole. Apologize here. It's okay. No problem. Yeah, there it is right now. Okay. So it's about, yeah, it, it, we're talking, the center of the cul-de-sac is about a hu, is going to be about 120 feet further back from that pole.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Makes sense. I, I, I think. It just, I look at the rest of the project and see the density of it and just seems like the remaining project seems to be getting spread out quite a bit.
Well, that's one of the reasons why, like I said earlier, with the reduction in the number of units, we actually had an opportunity to condense that. So it would have been, the cul-de-sac would have been slightly longer, but we, we shortened the length of the road that needs to be extended to try and take the pressure off that area in the back that's currently ponded. And the, the intention and the, the reason that storm drain has been designed there is to take care of that ponded area. To take care of the flow that comes off the abutting properties onto the site and have a way for it to drain. So that's, that was, that's the reason for that storm drain.
Okay. Is this something that conservation also requires as well?
I don't know that that area of the site is in conservation jurisdiction, but it's just, it's really, it's really just, it, it kind of falls under the, the category of good engineering practice. I mean, when you, you have a flow condition coming on the site and the, the previous engineer that worked on this and was approved, that got the, had the initial approvals, were the ones that designed this and correctly so. You have to, if you're building a storm drain system that received, that's going to receive flow from, from an offsite area, you have to, you have to accommodate that in your, in your storm art design. And that's what that pipe was designed to do. And we're not, we're not changing that. We've only modified it just to accommodate.
What will the elevation change be of the pond from its existing? What's, how much will it be raised?
So let's see if I can get to the grading plan here.
You can throw a dart. That, that should work.
Yeah, a, a few feet from looks of it. But only in a portion of it, only the front portion of it. The back of it is, we're not intending to change. We're trying to preserve as much existing, existing conditions as we can there that can re-vegetate over time. That, that would be the area where that conservation restriction would go.
Okay. So where was the grade prior to the project? Of the pond?
I, I don't know the answer to that. We, we got involved.
Was it 20 feet? Was it 50 feet? Was it the height of the ledge that?
Oh, I don't think so. That wasn't an area that you blasted ledge, where the, where that ponded area is now.
There's no ledge there.
Okay. All right. Again, I'm just.
Yeah. There, there may have been some, I don't know.
Okay.
There was some overburden strip there and that's maybe why it's getting hung.
We haven't touched it.
Yeah. So.
I mean, the only thing is some trees that came, that are.
It truly just cut off by the presence of the, this material stockpiles, which is why it's caused to, combine that with a epic rainfall summer. And you have a, you have an issue with the ponded situation there. But at the end of the day, the design, you know, is such that there wouldn't be a pond there anymore.
Yeah.
It would flow through the pipe.
Okay. Thank you. Next, again, I'm a visual person. I, I was at the site today again. The loom, loom mountain, I'll call it. Just in looking at that, is there enough loom or the loom plus what's going to be screened? Is that enough to restore the property?
We, we think that.
Because it really doesn't.
From what Frank calculated, I may have to bring in some loom.
Okay.
There should be.
So it's safe to say no more loam will be removed from the property?
No.
That, that's, that's right. Remember that from the initial meeting we had a few months back and so.
Okay. Great. I looked at the rules and regulations that seem to be, have been written some time ago, 10, 12, whatever years ago, and it talks about a clubhouse. So, you know, we've had some time to digest this a little bit more. And some tenants may have commented during our site visit that the anticipated clubhouse is going to basically be another, another manufactured home. Is that correct?
Similar, like modular, yes.
Okay. And is there a location for that?
Yep.
It's on the plant.
Okay.
It's on the
Approved.
Change.
Right.
The end of the project. Please, for the, of the project, 41 homes that were built in a space that we are shown on the, that which would be built right now.
Did you notice where the dumpster was? In the front of, when you first come in, there's mailboxes and then there's a dumpster anyway, an outside community area? Behind the dumpster.
It's not in that area?
Where our contain, our storage container is.
Okay. You had set a 6% grade, so six feet every 100, you said?
Yep. Six feet in vertical every 100. And it's, it's a shorter distance than 100 feet, but that's just to have people visualize it. It's a.
Okay. And, and just curious, what is the reason for the grade at all? Is it so you don't have to jackhammer as deep?
Right. We, we were tasked with trying to minimize rock removal in the interest of trying to get the work completed with the least amount of noise and nuisance possible. So that's why we introduced that, that slope.
Okay. So it's.
It's really in the spirit of trying to, trying to reduce the amount of hammering that we have to do for the utilities.
But instead you have earthwork, right? You have to bring loom in, spread it, compact it.
Yeah. I mean, the loom you would have had anyway, because that's more of a horizontal area.
Travel.
But there's more, yeah, there's a little bit more fill, but we thought that would be, we have fill on site. And we thought that that would be advantageous. Reduces the amount of, you know, material that you'd otherwise have to take offsite and it reduces the amount of rock that you have to remove. So we, we, that was part of the reason why we were brought in, was to try and, try and come up with a, a solution that, that minimized that to the maximum extent possible.
Cul-de-sac is, is for fire and safety?
Correct.
Okay. Great.
Mr. McLaughlin?
I think I'm good.
Just a point about the cul-de-sac. I think you'll also note there's a fire hydrant at that point. So just to support this kind of, a life safety aspect to it.
Yeah.
I think I'm good for now. Thank you very much for your feedback.
I do have a question now.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds, go ahead.
Joanne?
Yes.
Nice presentation. Thank you. You've obviously put a lot of effort into coming before the board tonight. Also want to just speak to the, the crowd, the consistent crowd that showed up. Appreciate everyone's active participation. And for those of you who spoke, I'd also say that it sounds like you spoke for those that didn't speak because others didn't speak. So thank you for sharing your words and your questions with us. I think for, just to, for me to maybe think out loud and, and arrive at a question. It has gone on for a long time, definitely looking to close the loop with some degree of confidence and assurance. with some degree of confidence and assurance. So, a- at this point in the game, what's your confidence level that what you've laid out tonight is not going to change? We're, we have good, you know, a good plan, you know? I, I get that you can't predict the future and weather and construction season, understanding all of those normal things, but is there anything you could speak to that, what's different about the plan in terms of, um, confidence to fulfill it tonight than perhaps in the past?
Well, first, I appreciate you guys all having me here, but I'm very confident we can make that timeline work. Obviously, we have less homes, there's a little bit less infrastructure, so we should be able to complete it without a problem. And I think you'll be happy with the results.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board member have any other question before we move forward?
Was there any discussion, and I apologize for being like a zoning board meeting spoke to start-
I think you left the zoning board a long time ago, Mr. Solicitor.
7 o'clock, 7 o'clock.
Yeah.
Was there any discussion about an operation and maintenance plan for the drainage structures inside the, and then, any way that we can have some assurance that our DPW will not be eventually inheriting, uh, the drainage structures up there?
So, the original decision certainly asked for compliance with all necessary permits with DPW and DEP, and we have a cons comm ongoing procedure that I would normally expect to take care of the issue. But perhaps Mr. Roy could enlighten us a little bit further on those two issues? Perhaps Mr. Roy could enlighten us further on those two issues?
I, again, my firm was not involved in the initial permitting. I, I should make that clear for everybody in the room. We, we were retained several months ago for this process.
Okay, so we'll let you out alive.
Thank you, uh, thank you. But the, uh, the, a development such as this requires the preparation of a stormwater report to document compliance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy, of which there's 10 standards. One of the standards is having an operation and maintenance plan. So, while I don't, so there, there should be an operation and maintenance plan that's already in existence for the stormwater. If it's not attached to this board or the planning board, it would most certainly be attached to the order of conditions that was issued by the Conservation Commission. So, I mean, to answer your question, there ought to be a stormwater, uh, management plan already in place.
Okay.
What was the second one? What was the second question?
Uh, how, how will we not eventually, 20 years from now, have the city inherit the operation of the stormwater and sewer collection system inside the, is there?
Yeah. Yeah.
Because when the resident, what's will happen is the residents of the city will be contacting the city. They will say, "Our sewer system, to me, looks like every other sewer system throughout the city, and why is the city not coming up here to address these problems?"
I mean, look, if, 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 you know, you want to consider it a private road, and it won't be taken as a public way, and we won't petition it for public way, that's fine with me. Um, it's going to, the reality is what's going to happen anyway. Uh, this has nothing to do with this project, you know, I've done hundreds of developments, and, you know, I would be lying to you to think that when the residents of a private road drainage doesn't work, that the first person they call is going to be the town or the city. That being said, you know, if you want us to ma- you know, agree that it will be maintained as a private road, and the owners will be responsible, you know, for the drainage, and, you know, the road itself, you know, it's a typical condition, that's not a problem with us. I don't know if that was a condition a long time ago, but if it hasn't been, we'll do it. And if there isn't a stormwater management plan, or somebody lost it, some of the records over time have seemed to, uh, before the flood, have disappeared, we will submit one to the Conservation Commission in connection with their present, you know, review of what they're reviewing.
Okay, submit to the Conservation Commission. And not, and to be operated as a private way, right?
Right, I mean, I'm sure this, I'm su- I'm sure the city has a standard provision that, you know, with, basically, it says that these roads shall remain private, that they won't petition the city to be accepted, you know, blah, blah, blah. So, you know, we don't have a problem with that. In fact, I ca- I'm, I'll be honest to you, that I, that would be my impression of this development anyway, you know, given, looking at it.
Okay.
All right?
Okay. All right, I do have a, a couple of questions for clarification. Um, first, there was a modified plan that was page C2 that was submitted today, but it is dated back on 8/16 of 2023. Is there a, a more correct date for this plan to be referred to?
The plan probably was taken off another plan.
I think it was part of the set of plans before the change in units.
That plan was created, um, I think this morning.
We, we held the original date, but if you look in the revision line, there's a second revision, and this is super small, but it's 9/13/23.
That is super small.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think it's, I'm, I'm, now I know I'm getting old. I think it says 9/13, I think it was yesterday that we, we prepared this plan. So I think if you reference the revision date, you'd be okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then, you know, I, I appreciate the work that was done to draft a proposed decision, and I think that we're going to end up somewhere in between one and the other. But the, the issue that Mr. Reynolds very nicely addressed with Ms. Hamburg, but, and I don't want to, uh, really go far into is the continued history of, of delay in the project. I would like to have a way to ensure that if this timeline is granted, if the additional units are granted, that we don't have the petitioner coming back to seek forgiveness for exceeding the timeline. And the timeline that is really most important, at least to me as one board member, is the first one, that the roadway hammering be completed by the end of the year. Um, and I think we've, our discussion was that installation of the concrete pads by the end of the year could also be accomplished, but please correct me if you didn't also concede that in discussion.
I think, um-
What was the date we suggested? I think it was, uh-
Mainly it would be grading.
Let me go back to the-
Grade, and I know you have that initial list, but I thought you had added the-
Because of the weather, there's no way I can get the concrete in.
Yeah.
I apologize, um.
So the written list was remove the stockpiles, the hammering to be completed, the processing and removal of the extra material, which I think we've, uh, specified is just screening.
And grade.
Rough grade the road.
Yeah, and paving, existing driveways, grade homesites, so.
Grade homesites, and, but, but you were not able to offer the installation of cement pads, okay.
I think, as Joanne indicates, uh, you know, that, that would happen if, if we were lucky
Mm-hmm.
at the end, and then you can't pour concrete anymore, so, I mean, that would be too optimistic.
So, as a way of ensuring performance, um, of the deadlines, understanding that here and there are day slips, right? Would the applicant be open to a condition that no building permit for the installation of the actual units on any of the additional units be issued until that first phase is completed, the work that you've listed under number one?
No problem.
No problem.
That was our intent.
Okay, thank you.
That was our intent. It should be harder, but I just, I'm just, it, that was truly our intent. I didn't, wouldn't expect, and we couldn't ask for any building permit until we did that work anyway, so we won't.
And that way, hopefully, all parties are motivated properly to reach that deadline.
At that point, we haven't made any money, can't sell any units, and, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I would like to have a five-minute break before the board begins deliberations, but I'm ready to close the public hearing, if you have any final comment. Mr. Reynolds, do you have a question or deliberation?
Yes, my question is just looking at the screen. It may be mistaken, but if, um, I don't know if Counsel Fleming had anything to add, or if we're done.
I think she did have, she has had her hand up, and she very kindly did not use all of her five minutes. So Counselor Fleming, if you would like to speak a little bit further, you're welcome.
Thank you, I'll be very brief. I want everybody just to imagine, you're 75 years old when this project begins, and now you're 92, and the, the work still is not completing, and the developer is asking for two more years. She will be 94 years old when this job is completed. That's my first comment. My second comment is, I would really like to have my question answered regarding this happening in her backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fleming.
I don't know, um, I've committed tonight that, that it, the project or the units would be completed by 2024. Okay, I don't know, I think I said it three times tonight, and I pol- you know, we just put numbers in there. You know, we, obviously, I respect the board, with some pushback from the board and neighbors, okay? And we'll get it done, or we are required to get it done by 2024. So the 25 is out the window, right? I think, you know, I, the rest of the stuff, we've either agreed to in advance, or if people ask us to change things, like the 7 became 8 a.m., we agree to it. You know, like, so, I just, I want to get this project, you know, you get the benefit of my partner for all those nights. I just want to bring this to an end, uh, you know, we get a lot of brown envelopes in my office right now. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, I am going to close the public hearing. We're going to take a five-minute recess. When we return, the board is going to deliberate. Deliberate means we do not take public comment, we do not take petitioner comment. Hopefully, my board members are not going to ask to break that and ask the petitioner a question. But we will deliberate, um, and either vote on a decision tonight or vote to continue. We are going to stand in recess for five minutes. Thank you for, everyone, for waiting patiently throughout that recess. I, before we close the public hearing, I'm going to make a couple of inquiries of the petitioner. The, the unit at the end, on the turnabout, for a number of reasons, is, is just, it doesn't, it's not an attractive unit, it's not an attractive placement, the board has concerns about being too close to the ledge. Is the applicant willing to go down one unit?
I think that I pretty much compromised quite a bit already. I really would prefer not to.
Mm-hmm. Is the... Let me...
As you go up the cul-de-sac to the right a little.
So, on the turnaround, the only one that is actually have a driveway on the turnaround?
Unit 22. Unit 22.
Thank you, unit 22.
I really didn't want to give up any more units. We've already cut it in half.
Is there any way to turn that unit? Have it?
Probably, we could probably turn it a different direction if you wanted, but this was the best placement the engineer felt would be the easiest spot to place without ledge. We could turn it, I mean...
What, having a driveway off the unit?
Mm-hmm.
We could turn the unit and have the driveway not as shown there, but off of the, you know, what I'll call the throat of the cul-de-sac. I mean, what Joanne says to me is that the engineer put it there to reduce ledge removal, but rather than lose the unit, we will turn the unit and so that it's, I guess, perpendicular, or more perpendicular to the cul-de-sac. Is that okay, Joanne?
Yeah, that makes the board happy, but I really...
Okay.
And unit 27, which is, as you're proceeding in, the last unit on the left?
Correct.
Can that be turned so that it is facing in the same direction, rather than horizontal to the road?
Originally, they were. We turned them to make them a little further from the neighbor's property line. And from speaking to the engineer, they actually fit better, so...
Yeah, we, I don't, I mean, I showed this plan to Christensen as attorney. If we turn unit 27, it's going to, whether we consider it important, they may. If we've turned it now, closer to their property. The other one would be turning it away from their property.
Maybe I could make a comment now, Chair?
Uh, go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Just, I think what we're looking at is consistency. So, all the units on the west side are 16 feet apart, right? So, unit number 27, just turn it so that it's perpendicular to the road?
I get it.
And then, you know, if unit number 21 can be moved so that it's consistent with all the other setbacks?
21 or 22, sir?
21. And, you know, I'll be very frank, the board is here to compromise.
Oh, no, no, I said I'd...
Right? So, you know, we made a compromise and granted a special permit with conditions, and we're willing to look at a couple more units.
I'm trying to understand, though, on 21?
Yep.
What's your, what's your concern on 21? I haven't...
To just decrease the setback by about 15 feet, and then, as the chair had mentioned...
And moving the unit away from the road?
No, closer to the other unit, so that it's consistent with the neighborhood.
That I got. Do you mind if, uh... No, no, but Doug generally shows you which, and...
So, I mean, just, how does it feel simple? Just, come on up.
Doug, you...
Show you. Take a second.
I mean, I think, I'm okay with what he drew, if that's what you want.
Actually, I'm looking, yes, thank you.
Right? Okay. That's what they want?
It's moving, just so I can, and so your client can hear. Moving 21 down, this is 30 feet between, so moving it closer to unit 20.
Because of the grading and the steepness of the road, that's why we slid it over a little, because it's a, there's a, the steepness because of the distance from going from existing grade to the new grade, we slid it over a little, so there'd be a little more space between them.
So I think what they're trying to accomplish is they want this to be turned, and for you to turn this unit, if you saved this unit, you have to move this down. That's what...
But I'm just saying, because of the grading, we slid it over a little bit.
Okay.
You're gonna have to, we're gonna have to build a wall. Have to adjust the grade to compensate for...
Again, we're, we're trying to...
No, I understand, I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
To, to build on the chair's comment, we're, we're in a mode to try to get this done tonight.
So are we.
General consensus, well, my personal consensus is looking at six units. Okay?
Well, that's, and turning them becomes less relevant.
Okay.
I just...
I'm good with that.
Like I said, the big, the big thing, excuse me, the big thing is, like I said, the grading, and because we limited the amount of units, we figured spreading them out a little would make it easier and make the lots more appealing and less steep. So it just makes it easier, especially where we are a 55 and older community, we'd like to try to keep the lots at a decent grade.
Makes sense.
That was the only reason we did it, so...
Makes sense, thank you.
I mean, we can, we can, you know, we turn that unit the way that, the colquay that the chairman and I had, and, you know, make it in the same parallels as the other ones, and have it, you know, a different driveway off of the cul-de-sac, and as Doug showed you, you know, we can dittle around with the other unit to give us some more space, but we don't want to use, lose the unit. I mean, it's going to be expense to make those units, you know, with walls and stuff, now.
Thank you.
That's it?
I think that's all the questions, thank you.
Okay.
Unless, Mr. Reynolds, you have a question? All right. That said, I'd like a motion to propose closing the public hearing.
So moved?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we're going to need to take a roll call vote, because we have a remote member. Mr. Chartrand, I or N. I, I...
We're not discussing.
Closing the public hearing.
Check.
Mr. Chartrand, your vote? On a motion to close the public hearing? If you're attempting to...
Am I unmuted?
No, you're, there you are.
All right, there I am. Yeah, in the affirmative to close the public meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
In favor.
And I am in favor, so that unanimously passes. The public hearing is closed. The board is going to move to deliberations. Mr. Chartrand, again, as you are remote, did you have any discussion that you'd like to have on the special permit as proposed?
You know, not really. I think every aspect of this has been covered. You know, there's, there's arguments on both sides, and I think there, the things that everyone is agreeing on are more important than the things that they don't agree on. And I, the recurring theme is finishing the project on all sides will be beneficial to all sides. So, I, I'm just looking at it like, you know, if, if our, the other members of the board have been satisfied with the movement of the units, and we can wrap this up tonight, I'm, I'm good, I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chartrand.
Sure.
Mr. Reynolds, any comment or discussion on the deliberation?
My initial comments are that, as amended on the layout with small print, 913, this one, I'm okay with it. I don't, I'm not persuaded by the argument to change, to move the units. I don't, happy to hear what some of the reasoning is behind it. I don't, happy to hear what some of the reasoning is behind it, if it's purely aesthetics. I'm more driven by the fact that whatever the minimal, whatever layout drives the minimal infrastructure construction, that's what I want. And, for example, if we looked at unit twenty-two, I'm gonna call it the west corner, kind of the corner kinda closest to the road. If that can be the shortest distance to the underground drains, that's great. If it means that the underground drains needs rock blasting to come up into the cul-de-sac, to come up the driveway, I'm not in favor. So, whatever the shortest distance is to the four or five-foot underground, because that's the shortest amount of time under construction, that's what I would be in favor of. And then for unit twenty-seven, I think that the level of effort put into the grade in the design, came up with this, I would say, I have no opinion about changing it. I think it's simple enough to change it. However, all of, the objective is to drive the closure, and I agree that what's already on the table is four. I don't think that the additional three changes anything. It's not gonna change the infrastructure work necessary to get it done. And so, those are my thoughts. Whatever conditions about completing it, that's, I'm okay with that.
Thank you. Do you want to go next, Mr. McLaughlin, or would you like Mr. Gallagher to go first?
No, that's okay. We made a decision, a well-thought, decision six months ago, right? And, you know, we're being asked to take a look at our well-thought decision from six months ago. And everybody in this room has a collective goal, and I'm certainly willing to compromise and modify my decision and offer the petitioner two more units.
Did you want to continue? Mr. Gallagher, do you have any comment for deliberation?
I do not. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll make my comment, and again, I think the proposal as modified is for three more units than the board had initially allowed. And as far as the modification of unit twenty-two to accomplish a shorter distance for utilities, I think that is a positive idea. That would only benefit all the parties involved by decreasing the amount of time for rock hammering to take place, or hammering to take place.
If you had, when you're ready, if you could share, allow me to share a couple thoughts, that'd be great.
Okay.
But I don't want to stop you more than I already have.
We had also been presented with an August ninth, twenty-twenty-three plan from Dillison Roy for completion of the work, which proposed that work be completed by November twenty-two, but start on September first. Mr. Roy has exited the meeting. It would be very nice for Mr. Millanson's mother to be able to have a quiet Thanksgiving, or at least a quiet Christmas. And if not this year, then next. The September thirtieth date that's proposed for installation of the recreation building, I, of course, would like to see the residents get that a little sooner than that. My biggest issue is that, once this compromise is made, we are going to be stuck holding the applicant to the timeline and to the compromise. Because everything we're giving away, we're giving away upfront, and that's on the number of units. I certainly would want to see the prohibition on the installation of any of the actual manufactured units on the pads until that first phase is completed. And if it is not completed by December thirty-first, I think that we, although we really don't like doing this, I think that the monetary penalty of three hundred dollars a day needs to be imposed as the expectation if we exceed that timeline, again, given past issues. It is always available to the board to request that it be imposed for a condition that's broken. But the applicant should have the expectation of that on that first phase, if timeline is exceeded. Because as it is, it's moved from November twentieth to December thirty-first. As far as completion of the full project by the end of twenty-twenty-four, I again would like to see the Thanksgiving date of November twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, so that we can be done with, everyone can be done with this by the holidays. I think that we're going to have to take a few, a detailed look at the conditions tonight, so I apologize, but everybody should have the expectation it's gonna take the us a little bit to go through conditions. And the main issue that I think we're having is number of units, and we might proceed conditions with a number of units vote.
Just one comment with regards to the clubhouse. Again, I had looked at a copy of the rules and regulations for the estate, referenced a clubhouse. And I believe that it was written many years ago. So, in fairness to the tenants, I agree with you, Madam Chair. We should try to come up with an earlier timeline so that the tenants that expected as part of their tenancy that they would have this to enjoy, that they could maybe even enjoy it next summer versus summer of twenty-twenty-five. Just a thought.
Mr. Reynolds, you had patiently waited to make a comment.
I just wanted to acknowledge, first of all, thank you. The emotion of all this, you know, it's a roller coaster. I think the board, a lot, a lot, a lot of parties involved from a lot of different angles. And I feel like I'm here willingly, but maybe a little grudgingly. I just wanted to acknowledge the emotion of it, because we're all people here trying to get, get something done, you know, on balance, trying to do the right thing. And it's not easy to think that you've arrived at a decision and then you haven't. You think you've arrived at a decision and you haven't. And the compromise today is another attempt to arrive at a decision or a final decision. I can't predict the future, but I would tell you that there would be high disappointment if the decision that we reached tonight was not met. And I just think there's so many parties involved, and let's take the high road. Everyone wants to do the right thing, and we all want to get it done. There's gonna be the ink on paper that we're gonna arrive at tonight, and then there's gonna be the spirit of the community. And I think the bridge between all of that is communication. And I'm really gonna encourage the petitioner to be highly communicative with not only the members of the city, but more importantly, the members of the estate. Thank you for letting me get those couple thoughts out.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to have a motion on, yeah, I'd like to take a poll, I think, rather than have a motion on the number of units board members are willing to consider. And I think the, it's a six or a seven, or if we want to put into different terms, an additional three or additional two. So, how many board members are willing to consider an additional three units? And again, because Mr. Chartrand is virtual, I'm gonna ask that he speak up first.
Sure. Honestly, I think the three is fine, and I'll tell you why. You know, we have a lack of this type of housing in the community, and that one unit's really not going to affect anyone in a, removing it in a positive way. I mean, I do have some empathy for the applicant, because this thing has gone on for sixteen years, and she did acquire some permits. I mean, other parties did drop some balls here. We can't act like she is one hundred percent at fault for moving forward with this. It was poorly designed, you know, and on a couple different levels. So, I'm okay with it for those particular reasons. I think that, and I also think I know the form of that pad is gonna be, when I worked for the city, it's very quick. That was designed by Pat Flattery. That's what he designed for a foundation. It's really simple. Everything up there is solid rock. They could probably place those things without those pads, but I'm pretty sure she wants to, you know, put everything in them so it secures them, and the trailer of the mobile, the manufactured homes eventually get traded out. So, I mean, there's a thought process behind this. And I will say also that I know that this project is the applicant's dream. It hasn't been mentioned, but trust me, I know. And that's all I gotta say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chartrand. Mr. McLaughlin, I would like you to have a chance upfront to express your opinion, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I thought I did a few moments ago.
Okay. Do you want to say anything additional?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, Mr. Reynolds?
I'm okay with up to three. If the board thinks it's two, I'm okay with that. If the board thinks it's one, I'm okay with that, but to answer your question, up to three, okay?
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, I am okay with three also. I think there's a need for housing, as Eric had mentioned, and I certainly can agree with that. So, for that reason, I would be in favor of three.
I will say for myself, I am willing to consider three in the decision, but part of that three is concession on other items. And I think there's some merit to the shorter distance in the utilities and having that unit moved, and that's unit twenty-two. And I think Mr. McLaughlin has made some very valid points about making sure that the placement of the units is as good as we can make it, and moving up the timeline on the recreation center for the residents would be very beneficial to them, and I think an important concession to make by the applicant, that together with the moving a deadline. And I, I think Mr. Roy presented what he could as far as the, getting the first deadline done. So, I think the one that's movable is the second. It's movable by a month. It's not a big concession. So, I would like to talk about conditions at this point in time, and I'm gonna ask you to bear with me because I'm going to be looking at the new proposal, looking at the old decision, and trying to come up with some proposed conditions that make sense. And I would ask any board member that if we've discussed anything tonight and it has escaped my attention, to note it down for permanency, please let me know. The first condition on the original decision was no blasting, rock hammering, or processing of earth, rock, or similar materials may be conducted on site. And I think the proposal is to modify that condition. It should still say no blasting, and no grinding of earth, rock, or similar materials may be conducted on site. No rock hammering or processing of earth, rock, or similar materials may be conducted on site after December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Makes sense.
I'll take a comment.
What does processing mean? They've told us that they're really not processing. They're gonna be removing the rock. It's gonna come out in chunks, and they're gonna load it on trucks and drive it away.
So, processing is, would, would only be screening because grinding, I think that I said, and Mercedes can correct me, but I think I just said no blasting or grinding.
Okay.
And then no, no hammering and no screening after December thirty-first.
Maybe we can qualify processing by saying all other processing may be done, or something to that effect.
Thank you, that's an excellent amendment. Any other comment by the board on that condition? The second condition is that no earth removal, as defined in the zoning ordinance, may be conducted on site. That should remain.
Or no earth removal, period.
As defined in the ordinance. Otherwise, we have to come up with a definition, and I'm not up to that tonight. Applicant may construct no more than four additional residential units according to the September twenty-ninth, twenty-sixteenth plan on the western side of Nigel Court. The modification to that would be no more than seven according to the August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three Dillison Roy plan as modified on September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Sheet C two.
Sheet C two. The third, excuse me, the fourth original condition was hours of construction are limited to Monday through Friday, seven a.m. to five p.m., no construction work on Saturdays, Sundays, or holidays. The proposal would be to modify the hours to eight a.m. to five p.m. Number five, the applicant shall employ dusk mitigation measures during construction and regrading. That would remain. Number six, not to be operated as a public nuisance. That would remain. That would remain. Number seven, site to be kept clean of construction debris. Dumpsters to be egged regularly. There's a proposal to modify that to also require that all construction equipment be moved to the end of Nigel Court during construction. So that stored equipment is not stored throughout the community. It is stored at the end of Nigel Court. Was that clear, Mercedes? Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, based on multiple visits to the site, that there, when you pull into the initial estate to the right down below, there's construction material, maybe construction truck or trailers. But it'd be nice to see the park cleaned up so that the abutters aren't looking at various construction and project materials, that it all get moved up to the construction site so they can finally start to enjoy the aesthetics of where they live. So I think that was kind of what we were looking at.
The potential complication I see is that we're going to have a conservation easement on that portion of the land. So, and that's to be executed upfront. I think that the parties can properly manage to temporarily accommodate each other on that issue without the board going to the extent of writing out how that would happen. Original condition number eight, onsite toilets to be provided for all construction workers. That would remain. Condition number nine, no construction vehicles over the weight limit of the Ringe Road Bridge or any other bridge in the area. That would remain. Condition number 10 was drainage problems on abutters property to be resolved, which is a very general condition. And I'm going to ask Mr. Solicitor if he could suggest a resolution, given that I think the statement was that the proposed plan addressed that issue by directing water away from the abutters.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of that. And it's tinnitus, it's really not.
The condition is that the drainage problems on the abutters property to be resolved. Given that construction will occur according to a plan that has directed water away from the abutters, I'm thinking that we don't need to include that condition anymore. But I'm open to suggestions on language.
I think I would look for some type of incorporation of, they're going back, and I think they're, still have to go back in front of Conservation Commission.
Mm-hmm.
But drainage per plan?
Mm-hmm. As, Eric, that's a good, sorry, Mr. Chartrand, good suggestion. So I would say as of Dillison Roy Plan dated 8/13/23. And as required by Conservation Commission, DPW and DEP. Did you have another comment to make?
Prior condition, if I can bring us back to that. But I want to be done with this one first.
Okay.
Comment?
All right, go ahead.
This is rural residential. These parks are not allowed in Massachusetts. And here we are. So I am a little concerned for the visual aspect with the abutters that have made a long-term lifetime investment in rural residential, about them looking at a detention pond with a bunch of riprap in it. So let's please be sensitive to that.
Okay.
Somehow, whether through screenings, and again, I'm looking at a plan. I'm looking at gray and black and white, you know. But there has to be sensitivity to what this district is and not have people looking at what you typically would see off the side of a highway.
The detention pond, I believe, because of the hole, is much lower than the abutters properties.
Yeah, I don't want to over.
Do you have a suggestion?
There's got to be some language in there how we can just be sensitive to that and be able to deal with it if we need to.
Okay.
And I don't know the answer.
Can I just ask, is this detention pond? I hate to ask a question that demonstrates my ignorance, but is detention pond in the conservation area? Is that, that's where the pond is?
I don't know any, I know very little about it.
If you're talking about the proposed conservation easement, the detention pond should lie within it. Because I don't know how it wouldn't. If the conservation area is basically going to encompass all of the undeveloped property at the end, and this is one of the issues because the parties have worked so hard to come up with something. We don't have a plan. We don't have a plan marking out the area. And I assume that's going to be part of the language that's in what's eventually in the easement language. But I don't know how you would have that without the detention pond within the conservation easement.
Right. Because typically you would have the restoration of the.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chartrand?
Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention that there's been several changes in conservation's abilities with the Supreme Court decision that was recently rendered. But we also have local laws I'm not familiar with enough to comment on, local bylaws. So that's, it's just a complicated issue. You know, they changed the definition of waters of America.
Okay.
There's no detention pond?
So I think the best that we can do is probably make, give some general guidance to ConsCom?
Yeah, again, and I don't even know it was there. I'm assuming it was a wooded area.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I'm assuming too.
You know, I don't think it should be something that's kind of like filled in with the leftover debris we're calling that, you know, we're kind of restoring the habitat with all the.
Okay. So then I'm going to add to that condition that we just discussed, which references the drainage problem as resolved in the plan by suggesting that we add screening to be provided as designated by Conservation Commission. And that'll give us a general without a specific.
Can I just add an idea? You could say be constructed and maintained pursuant to requirements of the Conservation Commission. So if we want to just leave it to screening, we would say screening. But whatever they think, I mean, they may have other, a different perspective on it than I would because I just don't do conservation on a regular basis, so.
Yeah. I think that's a good suggestion on the modified language. If you can incorporate that.
We want to carry the concept of screening, which would include but not be included in screening.
Can you talk in the mic, please?
Well, I'd love to help.
So you had a comment on the previous condition?
The prior condition on the trucking. We should have some, there's a third party that's going to be involved in this. So the permit can only make some obligations on the applicant. And like the court order can only order the parties to the case. So I would suggest that we thank some owners on the applicant to provide notification and instruction to the third parties if we're moving them today.
So on condition nine, applicant shall notify any construction vehicle servicing the property not to exceed the weight limit of the Ringe Road Bridge or any other bridge in the area and shall provide a copy of said notices to the building department within 30 days of the date of the decision. Or at such times that the construction vehicles are hired thereafter. Okay. I'd like to move on to the original condition 11. This was the phasing of the work. And I think in this case, we have some wholesale replacement. So for condition 11, the following work shall be completed by December 31st, 2023. Remove existing stockpiled earth materials so long as the same do not constitute earth removal.
Except loom?
No loom shall be removed from the site. All hammering on the site. And I know it's for utilities and it's in the road, but I think all hammering on site is probably enough to cover that. All hammering on site shall be completed.
May I inquire?
Yes.
If we have an initial condition of removing existing stockpiled earth, I'm sorry, it's handled in the next one. I'm sorry.
Okay. The next proposed condition or portion of this condition is process and remove extra material. And I think the language I'd be looking for is all processing, including screening of excess material to be completed. Remembering, the beginning of this section says everything following is by 12/31/23.
Of processing, which is limited to screening. So can we make sure that this is limited to screening?
Processing, which is limited to screening.
Okay.
Rough grading of the road and installation of utilities and drainage in the road according to said plan. Paving of the driveways on existing homes. Regrading of all home sites currently existing on the premises. Is that able to incorporate the new? I'm sorry, can you nod or shake your head? Is that able to incorporate the new home site regrading to?
It'll be rough graded.
Okay. And new sites.
Madam Chair?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Mr. Reynolds, earlier comment about other debris on the property being removed. It was falling ledge you had pointed out. Maybe you could address it.
Yep. All falling, all debris, ledge, and other waste materials.
Hazardous ledge?
Would you like, can you propose the condition? Because that would help.
It's just, just the practical point is that the existing homes, the greater the ledge.
Maybe the ledge that is.
I'm going to try to say on the east side of the road, some of it is more precarious and falling. We've certainly had some very heavy rains. And that should just be brought to the attention that if we're at this stage of construction now, I think some of the machines could probably address that rather than putting the homes in and then not being able to get back in there and.
So we had.
Any loose ledge that's up there that may fall.
We had an original condition that any erosion controls required to prevent further erosion of the existing slopes to be placed as necessary. And we could add in debris removed to that. Would that, do you think that would state your concern?
I don't quite think it does, but.
Can you modify it so that it does? You know, I'm asking because we're sitting here trying to craft language and it's difficult for me to do that. And it's easier to say in a paragraph than it is to say in a sentence.
It's easier to say with a picture than it is with a word.
Yeah.
Absolutely with you.
Madam Chair. Mr. Reynolds and I, we were at the property today. And some of the residents pointed out that the ledge behind their property, where you typically would carve out an area, right, of ledge, usually, one would think, and again, not an expert, that as, you know, the height of the ledge wall increases, it tapers back to allow for falling debris. Where the area that we visited, the taper of the wall actually was on a slant. So that the, as you approached the top of the ledge, that there was debris that was starting to fall off down into kind of a swale area. And some concern was raised that it's kind of a young project, but they're already seeing, you know, some failure. I don't know how to put that into language as well, but we're just pointing out that, you know.
I like stabilizing falling debris, it just came.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I appreciate coming up with that language. So, any erosion. Mr. Chartrand?
I'm sorry. Yeah, you could also put in there something about to be evaluated by a design professional and repaired in accordance with their recommendation.
The risk of falling.
Which would mean that they definitely.
Shall be evaluated by a designer.
Like Dillison would like to look at it and then they could make sure it's stable. And if not, they can design a fix, basically. Or whoever else, whoever you want to hire. Or they could evaluate it and test it. And if it's solid, well, they're engineers, I'm not. You know what I mean?
I do, thank you. So I'm going back to the original condition. Any erosion controls required to prevent further erosion of the existing slopes to be placed as necessary and any degrading ledge.
Shall be evaluated by a designer professional.
By a designer professional and stabilized in accordance with their recommendations. So on the original, on the original special permit decision, we had any necessary permits from DPW and DEP to be obtained. But I think that's already within what was stated. we had any necessary permits from DPW and DEP to be obtained, but I think that's already within what was stated. And then the only other issue is that the grading of the home sites in the original condition had a requirement that, or a statement that they be regraded, loamed, restored and seeded. And so I think that if we modify what is done here to state it in that fashion by December thirty-first.
Are you referencing five?
I'm looking at the old decision.
Yeah, driveways.
I'm referencing number eleven, A sub-two. Eleven, A, two of the original decision. You're not on a.
Page four or five?
Page four. I, I, if that helps.
Says outside perimeter of the project area to be regraded.
Yes, regraded, loamed and seeded. Anything else to add as a condition for items to be completed by twelve thirty-one twenty-two-three?
Five? Section five?
We're on the work to be completed, the whole of section five?
No.
We're on what work is going to be completed by twelve twenty, thirty-one twenty-three?
Number eleven, A, five.
Driveways of existing homes to be paved, if not already paved, we did state that.
Right.
Did you want to consider time bounding the conservation point?
I don't think I want to constrain the conservation commission.
Sorry, okay. That was the.
I don't even know that I could, so.
Do we want the operation and maintenance plan verified at this time?
The operation maintenance plan of the stormwater drain system to be filed with the DPW. So that's also by twelve thirty-one twenty-three. And to be updated at least every three years. Obviously, if there's no change, then that's just a restatement.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think you got my point, but I have just a question of doubt in my mind. I wasn't saying the conservation committee, I was saying the conservation land. Was there some discussion about?
The easement.
The easement.
I want a separate deadline on that, so this is just work that they have until twelve thirty-one twenty-three to.
My point, my point was that you want the easement to be completed by that point.
I think beforehand.
Check, okay.
If that's all on everything to be completed by twelve thirty-one twenty-three, I would add applicant shall be subject to a daily fine of three hundred dollars if all the above items are not complete by twelve thirty-one twenty-three.
Is that a simple straight fine of three hundred dollars?
All decisions are, of course, modifiable by later action, but.
Per DM fine or is it a weekly?
The ordinance allows the zoning board to fine or allows fines.
Of three hundred dollars per, up to three hundred dollars per day.
Three hundred dollars per day. I'm now going to move to.
By the fine issue, I'm confused in my mind on the fine issue. I just want to. What is the boards doing with the fine?
The board is stating that applicant is subject to a fine of three hundred dollars per day for non-compliance.
Okay.
By twelve thirty-one twenty-two-three.
Madam Chair, I believe that language mirrors what's in Mass General, uh, forty-eight.
So it certainly does. And I realize the thing that we're all dancing around is the fact that we can also impose this at any time. I think what I am trying to do is put everyone on notice that fining is going to be, which I think is the last resort of the board, is probably going to be what we're looking at if there's not that initial timeline complied with. Because the board has some tools and a lot of concerns, so I'm putting everyone's expectations at that level. This is the other expectation. No building permits for any additional manufactured units to be installed on cement pads until the conditions in number eleven have been satisfied. Moving on from that, I want to look at the other things that are going to be required under a different timeline. The proposal is that all remaining home pads and final connections for laterals and electrical utilities be installed and road paved by July first, twenty twenty-four. And I'm happy with that.
Let's talk about the recreation.
Recreation building. So we had initially required that to be installed prior to any new sites.
And by the end of this year.
And by the end of this year. The proposal is for September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, the recreation shall be complete. If we can move that up to June thirtieth, that would, or July first with the other deadline, that would at least give them a portion of the summer.
Yes, I'd like to compromise and accommodate them. What I'd also like to do is define it a little bit, you know, based on comments from the applicant, it it sounds like it's going to be a, another one of those units. So I'd like to maybe put some language in that it's going to be same size and the same type of unit as all the units that are already existing.
Do you want it to blend in or do you want it to be big enough?
Both.
Of course you do.
You know, I just, I look at if it's a community recreation place, I don't want it to be a ten by twelve shed, you know? I want it to be something that I guess everybody is expecting. I want to meet their expectations. So I would say at least as big as.
So after.
I agree.
I think that's what was promised and I think that's the expectation that the recreation building be consistent in size and design.
And language that it's okay that it's larger. I'm okay with that.
So I had finished July first, twenty twenty-four. And let's add to the end of that sentence, recreation building to be similar in design and at least as large. And I know that the units are of inconsistent size. So as large as the smallest unit on the premises. Or if you want to specify a measurement that you have, go ahead, this.
Mr. Chartrand might be familiar with these units and be able to kind of throw a dimension.
Mr. Chartrand, can you do that for us?
Well, well, I think maybe ask the applicant for some clarification because I do believe she referred to a modular and not a manufactured home, and that would be like a house type setting or a pre-manufactured type of thing. So this one, I want to check on if it's going to be a manufactured home or a modular home because there's a difference. And that would change the dimensions and they probably know what they are.
All right, so I am going to try to simplify this because again, I do not want to reopen the public hearing, sir. There is a twenty-eight by forty-eight, Unit twenty-one. And that seems to me like it's the smallest unit on the plan. So, unit recreation.
It's modular, put in modular, I guess.
Recreation building to be at least twenty-eight by.
Forty-eight modular.
Forty-eight. Inconsistent in design with the remaining neighborhood. The next deadline proposed is that by December thirty-first, twenty, and this has been modified, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. All units shall have been installed. And I think that's the one, if we're going to have a concession on the units, I'd like that to move to November twentieth, twenty twenty-four. And if you'll bear with me, I'm just going to finish looking to see if there is anything that I've missed on the original conditions. I think the site plan, I think, has been requested to be as-built site plan requested to be removed by the applicant. We're going to have review dates. And at the same time, I can't change the provisions of the ordinance. Go ahead, Mr. McLaughlin, if you could, just a moment.
I maybe misheard. The deadline is now November?
Twentieth.
Twentieth.
I believe that is before Thanksgiving.
I misheard, yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
I'm sorry, madam, I didn't mean to interrupt. The applicant is asking for us to strike twelve, is that it?
That is it.
Planning does a good job with landscaping and all that, so if it helps financially with a timeline, but I would like either us to have a review with regards to that, but like to see the place look like an estate. So we don't want to accommodate the applicant's request, but maybe have somewhat of an informal and you know, review amongst this board, I'd be okay with that.
I think we should set a review date, but I want to do that at the end. Okay. Additional considerations that have arisen during this hearing. So these are new conditions. Special permit to be recorded within sixty days. Applicant, I'm sorry, this is a next one. The applicant shall maintain all of the ways depicted on all plans that are subject to this special permitting as private roads and not as public ways. Applicant shall not petition for acceptance of the private roads as a public way by the city.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Do you want to say applicant or owner?
I could say petitioner. I can say permit holder. I can say owner.
I'm just saying if ownership changes, your intent is to have some longevity.
Maybe we'll say permit holder because whoever owns the land is going to be the permit holder.
Madam Chair, Attorney Priscilla has a comment.
Is there a maintenance requirement in there that would also subject the applicant or owner to a future zoning fee of three hundred dollars per day? If they fail to maintain it?
Thinking of the language, failure to maintain the integrity of the paved road, pavement in the road.
And infrastructure.
And infrastructure. Water, sewer and stormwater systems.
And electric.
As well as plowing. Shall subject permit holder to a three hundred dollar per day fine for violation of conditions. And then the easement is the next one. And again, any comments on the language we're using? Permit holder and property owner shall convey and record a conservation easement to a nonprofit agency or in a butter with no financial interest in the premises.
Do we need at some point a plan that shows that land?
Yep. Can I finish? I just want to finish. Over the unbuilt land at the northeast perimeter of the premises encircling the turnabout at the end of Nigel Court. which shall, at a minimum, prohibit development of that area or improvement except as depicted on said plan. This easement shall contain an engineered or surveyed plan depicting the exact area of the easement. This easement in executed form shall be submitted to the building department and the board within thirty days of the date of this decision and shall be recorded at the registry of deeds within ten days thereafter. Violation of this condition shall constitute sufficient grounds for revocation of the special permit by the board. Okay.
Does there need to be a setback notated, or is that irrelevant?
We have, you know, we're dealing with parties that reached an agreement in principle, I think, today. And I think we have the possibility of revocation at our hand if there's a problem with the plan as it's actually drawn.
Okay.
So. Okay. I, believe it or not, am out of conditions, can anyone review, except for the review date? Is there any other condition a board member would like to propose?
Capture moment's, moment restoration date, right?
Right.
Looks like you've...
Okay. Review date, remembering that the first phase is to be completed by twelve-thirty-one. We have a stated daily fine provision, and so I'm thinking the January meeting would be the appropriate time for review. Okay. The permit holder is always subject to recall by the board. For instance, if the easement is not executed, they're subject to recall at an earlier meeting for consideration of a revocation or other resolution. Mercedes, do you remember the January date for the meeting? Okay. I think if the, if we can accept... Nine, okay. So the review date is January ninth, twenty-twenty-four. I'm going to hope that this matter is well settled enough that we do not need a separate meeting for this matter in January. We're going to take a vote in a minute, I just want to thank everybody for having the patience to sit here through that, it is always tedious to sit here and draft, especially an extensive permit like this, as we are sitting here and taking all that has happened into consideration. And also, all parties for attempting to come together to reach a resolution. Hopefully, we are at a resolution tonight, and this project is going to go further without, forward to completion without further issue. I'm going to give a little bit of time for discussion. Yes. The applicant should make sure that the PDF of the new plan is submitted to the building department, so that it can be incorporated into into the plans that are connected with this permit.
What in the plan, the easement plan?
Is that what you were referring to, or this one? There was a provision that the Unit twenty-two...
Was going to be turned.
Twenty-two was going to be turned. Turned, and the utilities are going to come in at the shortest, so that it's just a minor modification.
It really doesn't make a change.
I...
We were taking twenty-two and moving it off of the cul-de-sac, right?
The pole's here.
We were turning it so that the utilities could connect with it at the shortest possible distance. So...
Hydrants here, the water's right here anyways, everything's right there, the source right here.
Is this a phase two, is this a phase two component, or is this pad going to be completed in phase one?
I don't think, I think it's a phase two, because it's just, the hammering and the paving of the driveways to the existing...
Will also implicate phase one?
So. All right. I am ready to have a motion proposed. I am not going to repeat all the conditions. I hope everybody was listening during that meeting, particularly Mercedes, as she was writing them down. So I'm looking for a motion on the approval of the special permit, or the, excuse me, the modification of the special permit on remand.
I'll make the motion under ZBA twenty-twenty-three dash zero eight for Joanne Hamburg at the property at thirteen forty-one Rintra.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to wait one moment. There's a motion made on the table, do I need to reopen? Mr. McLaughlin, would you mind if laying down the motion for a moment, so that Mr. Solicitor could speak?
So moved.
Thank you, go ahead.
I think we're okay. The applicant and one of the abutters is working out a conservation restriction that includes the northeast and northwest side of the property. We articulated northeast, they're willing to just work that out amongst themselves.
The applicant has given me a sketch.
We're agreeable with the...
Yeah, I think...
He's going to draft it, I'm going to give him a sketch.
The applicant has expressed some concern, a little bit about the positioning of this last building, I think that's a, I think we can look at it the review date, though. I think that we want it to be clear about that, we can take a look at that at the review date.
I think there would need to be more present, more information about a difficulty presented to the board that can't be presented without looking at the issue. So. And I real, the reason that I proposed a condition that was fairly vague on the easement is because I think we're going to have it come to life and express our approval or disapproval through our ability to revoke the special permit.
Okay.
I am going to ask if Mr. McLaughlin, are you willing to renew your motion?
So moved.
All right, and are we renewing the second, Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Is there any further deliberation or any statement a board like, member would like to make on the motion? I am going to take the vote by roll call, as Mr. Chartrend is remote. Mr. Chartrend, what is your vote?
Well, to approve.
Thank you.
As with...
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
In favor.
Mr. McLaughlin?
In the spirit to accommodate everybody that has taken the time in order this, I will go in favor.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. I know that's a... That is a compromise, and I also vote in favor, the motion passes, we have a revised special permit, and we are at the end of this meeting. The written decision will be filed with the building department and the city clerk, and will be available at the city clerk's office thereafter. Again, thank you, everyone, for your time.
Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
Good second, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Meeting is closed, thank you, everyone, and have a good night.